I have not heard from Dr. Diaz. I assume she'll be coming in just a little bit late. So we'll get started. Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right.
Let me see what I do with my phone.
Thank you. I guess I don't get a gavel tonight. Somebody thinks I'm gonna hit somebody, so... That's okay. I don't need it. It's okay.
Maybe we don't need it.
I mean... Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled work session of the Silver Consolidated Board of Education. It is March 19th and we are in session. It's 5:32. Welcome Superintendent Hawkins, fellow board members, members of administration and site administration, and esteemed guests and colleagues. Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
Absolutely. Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Dr. Diaz?
Here.
Myself, here. Mr. McMillan? And Mrs. Clement?
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is consideration and approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Clement. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion passes. The first item on our agenda and sole item of our work session agenda is Mr. Mike Stone with Stone McGee and Company with our audit report. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
I like being in front of the agenda. That means I can go home. Okay, guys. Short and sweet. The state auditor finally released it. A little comedic action there. They sent us an okay-to-print letter in January, but it didn't get to us. And so, I got concerned. They delay a while, but I got concerned and they said, "Well, we sent you one in January. We're just gonna call you and ask you why you hadn't responded." And I said, "'Cause I haven't got it." So they sent me another one. I responded. We got the audit report approved. Okay. First and foremost, you have an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which means that that's as high an opinion that we can give. We believe these financial statements are fairly stated, okay? Secondly, you have an unmodified opinion, again as high as we can give, on your compliance with federal regulations for the federal programs that we tested, okay? And third, and I don't know, probably to Michelle, this Michelle's...
Don't worry.
Probably the most important is that we had no findings or recommendations.
Wow.
It's as good as it gets, you know? We actually even got it out on time, too. Anyway. I did make a mistake at the committee, at the audit committee meeting. I miscounted. If you want me, want the Stone McGee and Company back, we can do it one more year. So we, we, we... I'm just miscounting. We can do it for eight years under the state auditor rule, then we have to be gone for two years. And I just miscounted, is what happened. So basically, I'm begging up here. That's all I'm doing. So I said, "You know, if you want me, I'm here for one more year." And I will do it on-site. I promise. Okay? Because that's, that's a big thing. I mean... What we're finding now is that the auditors have taken license due to pandemic. And now they're asking the rural districts to send them all their information to their offices, and they don't show up, which means that these people literally have to scan in and send hundreds or thousands of documents. And it's, you know, and I haven't figured this out, and I'm not gonna bore you with much of this, but I, if you're an auditor, you're supposed to be checking if they're doing things right, right? Okay? Well, if one of those things is purchasing, the vouchers, the payment of those vouchers and stuff like that, well, we show up up here and we just go in there and select our own sample and do that. But these guys are sending the list down to Michelle and saying, "Okay, send us these." Well, if I'm Michelle, I'll guarantee you, by the time they get them, they're gonna be beautiful. You know, even if they weren't to begin with, they're gonna be beautiful. And it just seems to me like kind of a an enigmatic thing. I don't know. Anyway. In any regards, I've already expressed it to you and to you and to you, but for the other members of the board, I don't know if we're educating kids, but we can sure run the central office. I can tell you that. This lady right here knows her job and does it extremely well. You've got a good central office. You take care of things. Things are ready for us when we get there. And probably most importantly, very cooperative, you know? Auditors are very disruptive by nature. They are. Ask Patrick, you know? They're disruptive by nature. And the staff is always very helpful to us. No negative, "No, well, I don't know. That's not my job" type of answers. They, they get it to us. And that's one of the things that holds your audit costs down and gives us as auditors a comfort level that maybe we don't have to test quite as much because we know what, what all's going on. I just want to compliment the accounting department over there, and obviously Michelle, the head of it, but there's other people over there. But, you know, you see us, sometimes there's three or four of us in Michelle's office at one time, you know, waiting, just waiting in line to ask her another question. And she handles it with grace and dignity, which I'm not sure I would. I'd be saying, "One at a time, and the rest of you get out of my office." But anyway, that's it. That's all I've got, guys. It's a clean audit report. It's as good as it gets. You can't get any better than that. And you should be proud.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Any questions for our auditor?
Thank you.
We'll see you next year.
Yes. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I am going home.
Perfect. That's why we put you where we put you.
I do appreciate it.
You got it. All right. That's it for our work session. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz to have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. We are adjourned. It is 5:38.
Look at that.
And we will start our regularly scheduled meeting right at 6:00. Sorry, guys.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled school board meeting of the Silver Consolidated School District Board of Education. It is March nineteenth and it is six P M. Eddie would be so proud. Welcome fellow board members, members of administration, Mr. Hawkins and Secretary Lisa, members of site administration, parents, community members, everyone that's out there with us. Hi Xander. Thanks for joining us. Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
This is Montenegro.
Here.
Dr. Diaz.
Here.
Myself here, Mr. McMillan and Mrs. Clement.
Here.
Mr. McMillan did reach out and let me know that he would not be able to make it. So we are all accounted for. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance followed by the New Mexico flags? Hallelujah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the ze symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Number two on our agenda is review and approval of minutes. In your board packet, you will find board work session meeting minutes from February twenty-sixth and our regularly scheduled board meeting as well as the minutes from the February twenty-second Finance Committee. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item number three is consideration and approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Khan, a second by Dr. Diaz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item number four is our information and presentations, our non-action items. Under Programs and Presentations, our first presenter will be Mr. Bob Carson with the Kiwanis Student of the Month. Welcome, Mr. Carson.
Thank you very much. Appreciate being able to be here again. Really happy to be here. Thank you Chairman and Mr. Hawkins, board and parents and students and staff and all of it. I noticed there's a little sense, like a sense of great deal of energy in the room before the meeting started. Some people might call it shenanigans, but I call it energy. And it's so great to have them here, have people here. Kiwanis is an international organization of volunteers of around about hundred, twenty-five years. We've been here at Silver City since like eighty-fourty-six and act, not Silver City, but all of Great Town. And we do primarily youth leadership opportunity programs mostly through the schools. And one of the ones we do is called the Student of the Month. And we ask the teachers or counselor to pick somebody within their school that might be most approved or is now going on the right course and they can set the parameters for that. And tonight we have several because we actually have a couple of projects could make. So we get started, they're listed on the, on your agenda. So let's start first with Tason Yost. Tason, if you could come up, please. I met Tason just a few minutes ago, so nice to see you, sir. Let me just read this note that we have here from Tommy Alsa, the school counselor. It says, "Tason Yost is a Cliff Schools high school senior." I'm sorry, he's a Cliff Schools high school senior. His upbringing nature is truly commendable and contagious. He approaches every day with a smile and a candid attitude. They can even, the toughest tasks seem manageable. Tason's commitment to his education is evident through his participation in dual credit classes. He's not only excelling in high school curriculum, but also taking the challenge of college level courses with enthusiasm and great success. This year, Tason became a member of the Natural Honor Society. Congratulations. Further heightening his academic achievements and positive influence in the school community. His willingness to work through challenges instead of seeking easy answers from classmates is a testament to his integrity and determination. He is quite a leader in the classroom and in athletics. But speaking of Tason, one teacher shared, "If you want to see a student with a don't quit attitude, you have only to watch Tason in the classroom or on the basketball court. He is the picture of perseverance and try. This young man has a tremendous work ethic and is reflected in his honor roll status as well as his effort to, the effort expels at every basketball game and track event. Tason is a gift and represents our school well as student of the month. Besides basketball, what track do you participate in?"
I do long jump and triple jumping. I do the four by one and open one.
Wow. I always wonder about class students, how they ever have time for any academics with all the sports that goes on. But it's a testament to the school and the legacy and congratulations of the meeting. Take this off here. That's your presentation. Here's a little package of a little son gift card and a certificate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
You're not a senior, right?
All that hard work.
Junior, okay.
Is that do credit jumping from junior to senior? That's some hard work right there.
Let me get a picture of you, if you don't mind. Well, actually, do you have a few more? Okay, so what we'll do is if you'll hang out over here, that way your parents can just take pictures of you and marble out your stylish hair. Then when they're all done, we'll get them all ready to go.
Right over.
I'm sure you've been in the right order that you are. Also, we have Devin Harsh.
Yes.
From Cliff High School.
He could be a senior.
Nice to meet you, Dennis. It says twelfth grade, so we've got to remember.
He definitely looks like a senior.
Devin Harsh is Cliff Schools Kiwanis Student of the Month for March. He is a senior with an impressive GPA of four point one zero five nine. It's kind of like that thing for pie, isn't it? Which ranks him second in the graduating class. Devin plans to serve his country and has expressed a desire to join the Coast Guard after graduation. Devin is a student who wholeheartedly invests in his team, school, community, and family. Devin engages in both hard work and fun times fully, without limits. He's a kind, he's a kind and smart and good to the core. Devin is a hardworking student who will go beyond, above and beyond what teachers share. When I need a volunteer, Devin's hand is the first to go up. He excels in all his classes and will also will give a helping hand to those who need it. Devin has been an asset at Cliff Schools and will be missed after graduation. We're proud to have him represent our school as the Kiwanis Student of the Month for March. Congratulations.
Good work.
Great job. Now you guys stand, stand up there, there for a while.
Now we're going to go to La Plata and first will be Xander, Xander Carrasco. Is Xander here tonight? There's Xander. I think Xander, you were for last month. Right, so glad you're here tonight. Teachers say about you, throughout his time at La Plata, Xander has been self-motivated and consistently works hard in all of his classes. What's your favorite class?
Math.
Math? Okay, he demonstrates kindness and always has a smile on his face. Throughout the day, he's talking to his peers and teachers, shaking hands or fist bumping, say hi. Xander is a leader and a role model for all his students. Xander is a memorable student, a memorable student and well appreciates his hard work, overall personality. Xander, you, we thank you. We look forward to hearing of your future success, Miss Starr Cruz.
Main character moment.
I just gotta know, how do you pick your shoes so white? Clean shoes.
Now we also have from La Plata for March Student of the Month, Pia Wester. Wester, now come up and tell me if I said that anywhere goes.
Hello. Good enough.
Nice to meet you. The seventh grade teachers recently voted to nominate one of our students for Kiwanis Student of the Month, and it must be you. For the month of March, they have selected Pia de la Plata Middle School Student of the Month. This is what teachers have to say about her. She consistently demonstrates consideration for others, exhibits exemplary character in her actions. Her positive attitude is infectious and serves as a, and serves as a light amongst her peers. She eagerly takes on leadership roles in the classroom, demonstrating willingness to guide her classmates and take risks in learning new content. Her dedication to academic growth and her commitment to doing the right thing make her a standout student. Furthermore, she participates in various extracurricular activities, including Science Olympiad, where she is, not only showcases her academic skills, but also her dedication to teamwork and collaboration. You did the Science Olympiad. What sort of subject matters were you doing for that?
We did disease detectives, forestry. I did flight.
Oh, there's a lot of stuff there.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Pia, for being a role model to others and representing La Plata. Congratulations. We've got one more. I'd like to remind the board that we, we do scholarships for students who are in our Key Club program. And so seniors, they're eligible to any senior who's currently a member of the Key Club. Thousand dollar scholarship, one of those and two five hundred dollar ones. The applications are out. The advisors have those, so hopefully we'll get some good responses back from that. And on March thirtieth, the day before Easter, that Saturday, we're doing an Easter egg hunt for everybody in the community down at Penny Park. This will be our seventh year to do this. And so it starts about nine or something like that. You know me, I don't have the details. But nine, nine in the morning and it's open to pretty much all ages. Lot of fun. We always have lots of fun. N and T Gore is from Silver High School, tenth grade. Please. It was great pleasure that we announced N and T Gore as a Student of the Month for March twenty twenty-four from Silver High School. N and T is a sophomore with a four point zero nine five two TPA and her activity performance, after activity performance, I mean, reflects her unwavering dedication to excellence in her studies. What is your favorite subject to study? English. N and T's involvement in basketball and softball showcases her outstanding athleticism and sportsmanship. N and T's leadership on the court and field has contributed to the success of the teams, respect to her fellow athletes and coaches. What truly sets N and T apart is her demonstration of caring and consideration of others. Her kindness, empathy, and willingness is lending a hand to the shop with the cup, walking dogs at the animal shelter, but not gone unnoticed. Thank you for your leadership. You provide Silver High School academically, athletically, and in the community. Signing, Mr. Broyles. Congratulations.
Way to go.
Congratulations. We'll get you lined up over here. It may shock you, but I want to take a picture. That's good. You ready? The opposite order. Perfect. I don't know anything, but my screen got all foggy. Count of three.
I'm really happy.
One, two, three. Okay, my phone just died. I don't know what happened. This is why I use the camera.
I'm afraid to move. I don't give.
Paparazzi.
Mr. Carson?
Do you mind if I stand next to you?
Thank you all. There's more. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
For serving more children in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Thank you, sir.
Did S C E A nothing to present? S C E A nothing to present? Okay. The next item on our agenda, under Programs and Presentations, is S C E A and they have reached out to say they have nothing to present, so we will move along. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is information to the board. Superintendent, Mr. Hawkins?
And we have La Plata Middle School students here to present achievements and goals. Mr. Traeger, Shot Neuler, and Bella Lopez. Please come forward. And have it projected back there. Is that? Um, I think I, if you just like nod at me in a general direction, I'll advance it. Does that work? There we go. You just tell them when to begin and I got you.
Okay, we're ready.
Alrighty.
Okay, I'm Ella Shabmular.
And I'm Bella Lopez.
So some of our goals are to keep attendance up. We are still working on cutting back vaping, but our vape detectors have gone off a lot less. Um, we are to do well on testing. To implement the house system, we are all pretty excited about that. And to finish the school year strong.
Some of our upcoming events are eighth grade promotion on May twenty-first. We will have a guest teacher speak along with a student and to represent the class. For spring finals, we're gonna have a student approach on this, so we're gonna have finals a week before we get off to school. So we can do all our fun stuff the last week of school and like, so we can like get our scores back on our tests and stuff. Cause last time we got them back like later into like summer. We are also having our NJHS induction ceremony either at the end of April or beginning of May. We are gonna be taking like the newer seventh graders and inducting them into NJHS for next year. And Mrs. Vaughn's advanced D L A class is going to be doing another mock trial after spring break.
For FFA, we placed second and third at N M L C. We had FFA week and we invited Cobree and Cliff. Cobree just started their new FFA chapter and it was just kind of reaching out to them to let them know that a lot of, everybody else is there for them. We started judging season. We had a tier, a competition in Tier C Cruises and we just competed in Roswell. I know our forestry, milk quality, pasture and range, livestock, horse. I'm not sure what else, but I know for almost everything, we have come, we have qualified for state and we have state in April.
So our achievements are, Ms. Moore's other one class is head of scheduling, head of how the role of course of high school. Our eighth grade math teacher is teaching us the virtual reality. Our attendance has been at ninety-one percent overall. They made a team eight on every twelve, thirteen on drugs, different types of abuse, and teen pregnancy. One of the officials there called our principal to tell us we're the best school they've seen. And for one, for every one disciplinary referral that we've had, there were three positive referrals. Our attendance average precise fifty-two percent.
For sports, our track team titles are this week, which is kind of nerve wracking. Um, four of our eighth grade girls are on the varsity softball and JV team. And then our baseball, eighth graders are feeling very included on the team and are excited for the season. Our band, twelve of our eighth graders are in high school marching band and three of them are applying to be a section leader next, next year.
For H D, we had a regional competition on February twenty-third. We had six projects place first, four projects place second, and three projects get third, and only two projects not placed. Our state competition is on April twelfth and thirteenth out of the.
Ms. Jones has a quote here. I'm so proud of their hard work this year, excited for how we do at state, and I think we'll compete really well.
I saw your picture. Do you want me to go back? Did you want me to? Okay.
All right. Our continuous improvements in these areas and how they're being addressed. Vaping, we are still working with the community agencies to provide the hands-on interactive prevention lessons. Like we had the National Guard can give a vaping lesson to our students. And after a student is caught with a vape, um, they have to take a course on like how to quit. Our behavior, we're still, we are still doing team incentives each nine weeks to encourage good behavior and good grades. Our grades, we still do Bronco Lunch Bunch. Students must attend if they're failing two or more classes. They, um, they get help with their assignments and get caught up on everything. And our attendance this week, our attendance has been the highest it has in a while. And I feel like part of that is because of testing, and we've been doing like raffles for, um, like if you would come to school for testing, you would, your name would get put in a raffle and you would get, um, chance of winning like blankets. Was it like burrito, tortilla, or like a pizza blanket and the donut and the donut?
Blanket.
I said burrito, tortilla.
And then we just have some photos from our school year.
Awesome. Any questions for the La Plata Middle School Student Council Representatives? Dr. Diaz?
Um, I didn't go to the specific conference, so can you speak to the, I think it was the first slide, the house?
Oh, the house system?
Yes, the house system. Can you speak to that? So the general public and some of us who are less familiar with the?
I don't know too much about it, but we are going to be like splitting up from K through twelfth grade into houses. So it's, so you have more of a connection to like each other and like more, to like have everyone feel more included, have something to like bond over. And there's going to be four different houses, and I cannot remember the names.
This is not a quiz, I promise.
What are the colors?
There's red, green, blue, and black.
Yes, awesome.
Madam President, Members of the Board, so how have you heard about it? Just out of curiosity.
Um, we're on the leadership board.
Uh huh.
And, um, Ms. Oso and Mrs. Cruz brought it up to us to like start introducing and explaining it to us.
Nice. Well done. They've done a great job.
Any other questions for La Plata Student Council? President, Vice President, and Treasurer? Is that what you guys are?
I'm not on the school council board.
Okay. You're on the leadership team.
Yes. I'm class president.
Okay, cool. All right. I don't think we have any other questions for you. Thank you so much.
Can we take their picture?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
He was almost, he was, did he almost make it out the door?
It was close, he said.
Do you want to get in the picture with them? There it is too.
I'll take pictures.
Then Mrs. McNegro and Superintendent O'Quinn?
Sure.
This is no fair. They're all taller than you.
Mr. Hawkins, here's, it's not on the floor.
Madam President, Members of the Board, I am, okay, it seems to be stuck. So let's try, Mr., um, so I'm going to do this. Share my screen. Share. Mr. Potts is helping me, I think. Survey says. It's not working.
It's like it's there, but?
It's not, it's not allowing me to project my screen. It's showing there, but it's not allowing me to do my?
Presentation.
Do you do the whole entire screen or do you do the tab?
The window? Okay, so I'm hitting PowerPoint. Hitting share. Somewhere, Mr. Alvarez is laughing at me. Okay, so it's, okay, so it's showing. And when I hit present.
It's not, it's not that screen. It's presenting the other screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to stop presenting. Okay, share my screen and hit screen one, right?
Entire screen.
That one.
Yep.
Hit share. That's the first one I hit, and?
Now it'll work.
Survey says.
What?
See, that's the one I hit first. Well, I'm going to go on without it because the show must go on. Do you want me to try it again? Okay, I'm just gonna. I think we can make this work, and we'll be okay. Alrighty, so I'm going to make my screen bigger, and we are just going to pretend like it's magically animated. So on March the seventh, we finally got a ruling from the Public Education Department on the one hundred and eighty day calendar. It's not a surprise to any of us that the hundred and eighty days was implemented. Um, it was the day after the governor signed the House bill, uh, which ensured that there would be funding. There was an amendment that needed to be struck through at the governor's level, um, as far as vetoing it before the Secretary of Ed would, would put it forward. What we needed to do, and forgive me again, I can't. I was hoping I could make that work, but I cannot. So what you're, what you see in front of you, and you have the calendar. You approved the calendar in December twenty three, um, based on the recommendations from the community. It had a hundred and seventy six instructional days and a total of one hundred and eighty three days total on the calendar. What we needed to do was adjust our calendar from one hundred and seventy six to one hundred and eighty days in town, okay? I'll talk about Cliff in a few moments. And so in order to meet those, that requirement, and I'll read through my notes there as well. Uh, on August the thirtieth, in the original calendar that was approved by the board, it was a staff development day, um, as well. And what we decided to do was take that staff development day, revert it back to instruction. And so that was one day that we gained back. Um, secondly, we adjusted, uh, one of our parent conference days. Statutorily, based on the updated language for, uh, from the state, um, you can have two parent conference days. We originally had three. And so what we did was we looked at September the twelfth, and we reverted that back to an instructional day and kept September the thirteenth and February the twenty first. Now ideally, especially at the elementary level, you want to have those two days upfront to really be able to sit down and, and meet. But again, working within the statute and, and how it's rewritten, now that's just one day. Finally, February the seventeenth was a, was scheduled as just a staff development day. And we reverted that back into an instructional day. And so that gave us three days there. We still needed to do some adjustments to make sure that we were in compliance with the state. Coming out of COVID, one of the things that the Public Education Department wanted to do was allow districts to still have access to, um, remote learning days. But they placed a limitation on the number of remote learning days you could have. Um, we have not had to take advantage of that in, in this past year. But looking at the calendar and recognizing that we really wanted to stay within the start date of the school year of August the fifth and the last day of school, which is what we initially intended of May thirtieth, we decided to look at a couple of our days and convert those to remote learning days. And so specifically looking at November the first, which is a Friday, it was listed as a staff development day at first, and looking at January the twentieth, which was a Monday, okay? We adjusted those days to make those remote learning days. Staff was to be able to report and do their thing, but we won't have to worry about adding any more days. Those two days will count as instruction days, and that will get us to the hundred and eighty. And now I'm stalling because I'm not sure what he's doing. Don't worry. Don't worry about it. I'm, I'm good. Uh, um, they have a copy of it in front of them. And so. But I thank you, Mr. Potts. And I'm going to, oh no, I can't move my mouse. There we go. And so you can see the new calendar, and you can see the changes on the calendar or based on what we recommend, what I put out. And I send this out to the community. At this point, it's been in the paper. We did communicate it out on Parent Square. Uh, I will say I needed to make an adjustment immediately after sending it out the first day. It's just like anything else. You, you, you want to hurry up and get the answer out because you, I, I, I suspect, as, as you did, the moment the ruling came out that afternoon, there were people calling, when are we going to get the calendar? What does this look like? And so we thought we had it out perfectly. There were some things that I did not read accurately and had to make some adjustments to. Went back in, made that, those adjustments. Um, and our calendar pretty much follows what you guys approved as a board, uh, which is good. I wanted to speak briefly also about the other part of this, which is a large issue, which involves the four day school week calendars. The revision to the proposed rule allows for four day school week calendars. But in order for them to do this, right, it's going to be based on their proficiency rates on language reading arts, right? And they're looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three data in comparison to the current year twenty-three, twenty-four data, okay? And so the paper did a really good job, and I, I want to commend the paper. And they don't always get this enough, and so I want to take a moment and just thank them. They did a really good job of doing, researching the situation, um, reaching out to the schools, asking questions, and then presenting the information without bias, but really fairly, and just understanding the situation. And I appreciate the way they approached it. I thought the article was spot on, and so thank you for that. Um, in order for a four day schooling, in this case Cliff, to remain a four day school, first and foremost, if you are below forty-five percent, then the campus has to grow at least fifteen percentage points. Now, on the language in the document, it says district or charter school. When I reached out to the Secretary of Ed, he recognized that schools like Cliff within a district that has both five day and four day exist, and it wouldn't be fair to put them in the same group and, and force them to, to line up with the five day school within the district and still do that for the four day. So he's allowing Cliff and probably other schools that fit in the same situation to show that growth independently of the district. So if, if they were below forty-five, which they're not, then they would have to show at least fifteen percentage points of growth. Whether they're twenty or forty-four, they'd have to grow by fifteen points this year. Now, if their data is between forty-five and sixty-five, then they have to show ten points growth at the end of this year, okay? If their percentage points was between sixty-five and eighty, they'd have to show eight points growth. And, and you can see that once you get to eighty, then basically you're allowed to not have to, as long as you stay above eighty, you're, you've met the threshold, and you can continue to remain a four day school. Now, I believe that we are in the ten percentage point growth area, but I want to be cautious on that because the state has not shared the information of how they are calculating it. From what I understand, they, that data for proficiency won't be revealed until after we have submitted our calendars, right, and, and they start to look at that comparison. And that's, that's in the secretary's memo. And so what is required, all four day schools are required to submit to the PED for approval two calendars. Their four day calendar and the five day calendar in the event that they don't make the growth. Um, as I understand it, and I don't want to misspeak here, but I presume, just like with our normal calendar, you will not be able to, to submit your budget until you have your calendars and everything else submitted, which is what traditionally happens now. Um, right now, Cliff has already had their four day calendar ready to go. They are going back and looking at their options for the five day. Um, they're looking at following the Silver Schools calendar as well as looking at a couple of other adjustments to see if there's a possibility of saving some of their four days, their Fridays, within their schedule. And so once they have completed that and gone through their process as they typically do, then they'll, they'll submit those to us that we'll be able to share with the board and then likewise present to, uh, the Public Education Department. And let's see, the only other thing I would add to that is there is, um, talk amongst the superintendents group to follow through on potential legal action. If you saw the paper, you saw that Santa Rosa already has declared that they're going to do it. Now, I'll remind the board that you were one of the first districts in the state to do a resolution supporting any action taken, uh, to address this this past November. I believe when it first came out in November, this board had signed a resolution that we then submitted already showing your support for the superintendents group and any action taken to remedy this. And so you're already on record for this. Um, and I will, as we have other information, I will present that to you. I'll pause, take a breath, and stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hawkins on the Public Education Department ruling and calendar update? Dr. Diaz?
Did they give you any idea for this year and upcoming years, what it'll look like as far as when they decide you've qualified or not? Or what criteria they're going to use? Is there transparency regarding those? Because it seems like it's a number. So numbers should be consistent across the book. At least that's what my?
They're very black and white. They're very black and white.
It's not left up for interpretation usually.
There's, there's no, I don't have any clear answer for that. Um, I will say that when I reached out to the Public Education Department, um, I contacted who I was referred to to ask the question as far as, um, the calculations and how that's going to be, um, determined. And I'm going to be cautious in the way I say it, but I'll be honest and say, I was told they haven't determined that yet. They're still working on it. They should have an answer in the next couple of weeks, and that was last week. And so I can't speak on how they determine the fifteen or the ten or the eight, uh, nor can I speak, uh, on how they're going to calculate that now because I don't know that they've communicated that out or prepared for it yet. And as far as letting us know, we'll know in the summer. So they'll let us know this summer how that, what the results will look like, but they have not made a decision on that. And that's a little disheartening.
So one other?
Yes, ma'am.
To me, obvious question. So is there like an evidence-based practice? Is there something, some algorithm they're basing this on, or are we just trying a new lane?
There have been several, uh, Madam President, Madam Vice President, Members of the Board, I apologize. Uh, there have been several districts that during their education plans, you know, every year, a district has to admit their education plan to continuously show growth and proficiency and, and moving in a, in a general direction. I do know, and this is very clear, that several districts submitted their plans last year with a growth of, growth model of five percent. And when they submitted those growth models of five percent, they were declined and they were sent back because those were greater than five percent was too much of an expectation. And it was unrealistic to expect that type of growth in that timeframe, so they had to go back and recalculate it.
Five percent was too much?
Greater than five percent was too much.
Interesting.
To answer your question about the science, so I know that last year they were denied for being greater than five percent. And they were advised to redo it.
Does that answer your question, Dr. Diaz?
No further questions, gentlemen. So we're?
Mrs. Clement.
Last year, five percent was too high, but now we're at ten and eight percent, at eight minimum for the schools that are achieving highly.
Makes a lot of sense.
Things to ponder.
Any other questions for Mr. Hawkins? Okay. Um, next up for you is Mr. Mark Valenzuela.
Mr. Valenzuela?
Mr. Superintendent, do you have the presentation?
I do, and given my stellar, um, record on the ability to present, um, you sure you want to go with that? I'm kidding. Not really. Um, let's see, I can get this up here. I hope I got this right. All right, if it doesn't. Alrighty, I'm going to make this bigger for you.
Great.
Perfect.
Well, thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you for coming. Yes, thank you.
Um, I, I wanted to follow up the presentation I need. Um, I, I wanted to follow up the presentation I made last, uh, month with some information the superintendent was asking me. You know, the, the question being if the district did go all the way up to ten mills and I was not, I did not show that scenario, but if it did, um, you know, what would happen? What would happen with the state's support? And this is a, I want to be very cautious with my words, just like the superintendent said earlier. It's a, it's changing daily in Santa Fe on this issue of the local match that the state will come in and support districts. So I used language last month that talked about a waiver of the local match if you went up to the ten mills. The, uh, the Public School Facilities Authority, which is the entity that receives all the requests from school districts, they're being inundated right now by school districts who are trying to get in the queue for their same capital projects around the state. Um, I've been quoted to figure that there's a billion dollars of projects around the state that are trying to get in the queue to get some of the support that, uh, you know, that we talked about where there might be a, a wave, a waiver of the local match. I was at a meeting yesterday in Santa Fe with the Public School Capital Outlet Council, and it was very clear to me that, that this group is thinking about this issue. They've, they've gotten this, uh, this tremendous demand from school districts. Um, and it's clear to me that they're thinking through how they're going to approach it and how they're going to be fair about, um, sharing the state's resources with districts who have needs. Um, you know, given those who have been in front of this council, uh, pretty, pretty substantially. And I, I won't mean districts, but there's, there's several districts that continue to show back up. And because they have their mill levy at a certain level and they can, they can get that higher level of support from the state. So where I want to be cautious is saying that if you were to go up to ten mills for the purpose of getting more state support, um, that, that pull is, is very competitive now. And, and my sense is the state is not going to waive local matches. They're going to look at reducing local matches. Um, and so therefore, while you wouldn't get that full hundred percent, you might get some level below that. And I can't tell you what they're thinking about what that amount would be right now, because again, I try to, they're trying to figure out how much capacity they have and how to be fair about distributing that to the, to the projects that start to come before them. So I, again, I wanted to be very cautious about that, that communication. Um, and having said that, uh, what I did in, in that, in that context is put together just a couple of scenarios to, to really address Superintendent Hawkins' question to me of, you know, if the district starts moving forward, what would this start to look like? Um, on the left-hand side, under the current structure, your local match right now is sixty-three percent. And the state would come in and share it thirty-seven percent. Um, and so the pie chart you see there is just simply showing that if you went to voters and asked for your full capacity that's currently available right now, which is twenty-four and a half million, uh, you would have that as the skin in the game from the district and the state would come in and support at fourteen point four million. Those are similar numbers that I had shared with you last month. I'm, I'm doing this under the context that the district might have a hundred million dollars of needs. And so the pie chart is, here's how many of the needs would get addressed under that hundred million dollar scenario. And I, and I, I don't know what the, the facility match plan will come out. I just wanted to treat everything fairly. So you would still have sixty-one million dollars of unmet needs under that scenario, current plan, where you're going now. Um, the middle scenario switches it up a little bit. It, it presumes that the state would reduce your local, your local match from sixty, sixty-three down to fifty, and then they would put in fifty. That gives you about fifty million dollars of, of project. So, so the state's kicking in another ten million under that scenario. And then on the far right is, is if the state really kicked up their, their side to seventy percent. Um, and you can see that you almost get to the whole full hundred million. Again, these are, and I want to be cautious here, these are just scenarios. We don't know where the state is going to, uh, what, how they're going to approach this, how they're going to calculate these. Uh, we're going to be staying very, very close to what's happening there in Santa Fe, uh, like we always do, just to keep, make sure that you're aware of what the variables and the parameters will be for making decisions like this. So having said that, I just, you know, I wanted to kind of lay out that, that, um, framework so that you had a, an idea of if the district went to voters, asked for the twenty-four million capacity, this isn't even moving it up to the, the full ten mills, but asked for that capacity, how you might be able to, uh, work a, a larger program, uh, for your facility. So having said that, I'll stop and stand for questions. That's, that's the primary communication I wanted to have with you today.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Any questions for Mr. Valenzuela? Dr. Diaz.
So I just want to be clear. Last time when we spoke, we talked about scenarios where things stay exactly the same or we increase our bonds, right? The, the three scenarios you have laid out here. And we discussed that, we talked about the first one, if we stay the same, won't even cover the bills we currently have that we try to cover now. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So as it stands right now, that won't even cover the utility bills that we try to cover right now, basically.
Can't pay utilities with that, but repairs.
Repairs, yes.
Madam President and Vice President. There's none of any additional capacity currently. Um, so, so the current structure that I'm showing here assumes that you would go to voters, ask for that full twenty-four and a half million, and we would, uh, raise it up to nine point five mills in one scenario, or the seven point five in the other.
So then my other question, because we were trying to decide what the, what's at stake, right?
Right.
So that's the first one. So if we make no change and leave everything exactly the same, that's where we're at. We're, we're below covering what we need to cover right now based on increased costs.
That's correct.
So the middle scenario, which is the seven point five percent, right, which would be a slight increase in taxes, property taxes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, would mean that we could potentially cover some renovations, but it would be difficult to foresee a new build.
No question about it, yes, ma'am, Madam President.
Right. Even within ten years.
Even within ten years.
That's what we had projected when we looked at those details, right?
That's correct.
And then the third scenario, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is what I got out of it. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing you clearly and we're projecting with the money we have or potential prospective funds. And then the third scenario, the nine point five percent, uh, would mean that we have enough to cover what we have right now. We could potentially do some renovations, but we would potentially have the option for new builds, such as things like Cliff schools.
That's correct.
Right? That's at the top of our list, I'd say right now, right? Um, and it would mean that the state, we'd have more potential to have the state cover the majority of the funding rather than us trying to figure it out.
That's correct. And, and the only, the only caveat I would have with that is on the majority, and I feel like that's, that's where I want to be cautious.
We don't know what that's going to look like now.
It's, it's, it's changing every day.
So traditionally.
Historically.
Historically, we were right, currently we're at the sixty-three percent us, thirty-seven percent them for any project.
Yes, ma'am.
That we engage in, correct?
That's correct.
Only for two years.
For two years.
And that, and that changes in two years.
And then we're going to be fitting more of the bill, correct?
Absolutely right.
Okay. So, and then the middle one would be fifty, fifty at best. We still don't know, right? We're saying if we did the seven and a half percent, the slight increase. And then the nine and a half percent, tr- historically, we know this is going to change, but it would be seventy, thirty. But we're thinking that they're going to put a little bit more locally as far as ownership. But when we look at Hatch, when we look at Baird, when we look at the Gadsden schools and their new builds, and when we look at Gallup, those are all tied to the fact that they're in that ten percent range.
Ten mills.
Or over.
Over ten mills. You do, and it's okay, ten mil.
Ten mil.
They're at a minimum of ten. Um, and Gadsden, for instance, is a sixty.
This is what happens when you get the medical person trying to do the fireworks. It's a good thing I have help here. So, um, I, I think that's what I need to be clear on. When we talk about what's at stake as far as when we go to the polls, what we decide that we are asking our voters and our community for, that's what we need to be clear about what's at stake. If we do increase or if we don't increase, um, what we're really looking at, right? Cause, and that's within a ten-year period projection, right? We're not just talking about in the next two years, the impact. We're talking about ten-year impact, right? Okay. So I just want to be sure I'm clear on all those before I'm talking about decision-making.
Madam President and, and Vice President, and I, I appreciate the clarification. I went straight to, you know, if you're going to consider going up four point one mills, here's your current structure. This is what it looks like. Um, and, and so I appreciate you bringing context to that. Where the district stands today without a tax increase, there is only sufficient money to do basic repairs around existing facilities. So you would not have access to the larger twenty-four and a half million, uh, and potentially the level of state support.
Thank you for holding my hand through that, because.
Oh, you did it.
Yeah, no, you, we should, we should probably, well.
No, no, no. We'll let you down there. We'll let you down there. Any other questions for Mr. Valenzuela? I have a few if nobody else does. You good? Okay. So kind of to her point, could you just tell us where we are right now? What is our current mill levy?
So for.
What are we at?
So for debt, it's one point nine mills. Um, you have also a two-mill levy in place. So you have that on top and then, um, you have the HB thirty-three at one and a half mil. So.
Three point nine plus one point five, five point four.
Five point four roughly.
Okay.
Adding the additional four point one that we talked about last month would take you to nine point, you know, uh, one or two-ish. And that gives you the six million per year that, uh, yeah, over the next ten years, that's kind of sufficient capacity.
I, thank you for pulling that up. Could you also show where we fall in the distribution of how we tax among other districts around our size and, and where are the arrow? Is that correct?
Where are the arrow? And Mr. Valenzuela, am I correct? Is it eleven? Uh, where's the eleventh lowest, uh, mill levy, school district mill levy in the state of eighty-nine?
He's like, you didn't tell me. This was my homework this time, right?
Um, well, I'm, I'm recalling back to that presentation. I believe it was sixteenth lowest, um, of all the districts. But there are some, and, and my analyst will tell, he'll correct me on the way home. Um, I, I, I believe that there are eight districts that do not impose any debt levy, uh, for their district. So in that context, you're the eighth lowest of those that have a debt levy in place.
So sixteenth lowest, but eight are nothing, so eight lowest. Okay.
Out of eighty-nine school districts.
Right. And this is.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I think it's important to understand context on the eight that don't impose.
Yeah.
They're oil and gas communities that derive a lot of value out of like a single mill for their operational. So, uh, and then, or their tribal communities where there is.
Other ways to generate funds.
That's correct.
Many, yeah. So one thing goes back, I just go back as I've kind of, um, really toyed with this idea over the last month, because the board takes this very seriously and it's, it's very important that we take care of our facilities um, and meet the needs of our students in our district. But one thing that I had, um, a memory on my Facebook pop-up and it was about our last bond project. And I, I don't know if you remember, not all of us were on the board then, but I guess I just, I have really struggled with the fact that then we didn't choose to increase, right? Because we'd be halfway there. And I'm sure, I know you were here and you've been off and on, and I don't know exactly what your recollection of it is, but we never had the conversation about this ten mil. And based on what we talked about last month, this whole ten-mil idea of at least getting a lot more funding from the state than what we're able to obtain currently, has been around for some time.
Sure.
Historically. So as a board member, I feel like I was just very naive or not in the know, not, I didn't know the right questions to ask. But the question that has been floating around our district with all of our constituents for years and years and years and years that we've never been able to answer is, how is so many other school districts in the state of New Mexico able to build these new schools? I mean, you go to Lordsburg, you go to Cobry, you go to Demi, you go to Las Cruces, you go to all these places. And what I have always thought was their state match is just higher, which is true. But their state match hi- is higher because they tax at the ten mil. That's the answer. And so had I known that four years ago, we would have inched closer, because that was pre-pandemic. That was pre-two thousand and twenty. That was before, um, everything that all of us are dealing with has pretty much doubled in price, right? When we go to the store, it would have hurt less. And so I want to take responsibility as a board member for not doing that then. That's what we should have done. We didn't know. And so here we are and we find ourselves in this position where I would rather our community have inched closer rather than having to jump. But the needs are astronomical. And so I, if you can fill us in on any of that, maybe it was just the director, the direction of the, of the superintendent at the time. We wanted to, there was other school districts that were not having their bonds approved, right? It's the voters. And so there was probably a lot of things that played into that, but I'm going to take responsibility as a board member for not asking the question then directly, because you had the information.
Sure.
And you could have said, the reason is this. So, um, I don't know if you can fill us in on that, if you kind of remember the process, but that has been something that has just really plagued me over the last month. It's like, we could have made this easier on our community and we didn't. And I'm going to take responsibility for that, right here and right now. So, Mr. Valenzuela?
Sure, Madam President. Um, and let me take some responsibility for it as well. And, and here's what I'll say. It was a different time then. Um, the state wasn't sitting on billions of dollars back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So, um, the largesse that everybody is now, like, you know, flooding the gates to get and position themselves, it didn't exist then. And so it was a different conversation in twenty sixteen, seventeen of state partnership and how much money they could contribute. And the state then was, was also being very selective about where they were putting their, their dollars. And it gets back to the Zuni lawsuit, the, um, you know, about how the state was funding both operational, uh, needs for school districts and, and capital needs. So it, it was a much different conversation in that timeframe. I can tell you that what I do recall about that bond issue was, is that the mill levy was going to fall off. It, you, you had, I think, two years left before you paid off all the debt within the district. And so I recall the recommendation that I made to Superintendent Brown at the time was that, you know, the option here is, is do you want to let the, the levy go away? Um, or do you want to maintain it at its current level? Um, and what could you do at the current level? And, and the direction I got, uh, and, and I don't remember this very specifically, but, uh, what, what we recommended was keeping it at the current level and you could generate about twenty million over that four-year period. And, and that's ultimately what happened.
That is what we did. And we thought twenty million would go a long ways, you know? We really did. We had a list of projects. We thought twenty million is going to be great. And then what you see at the high school, that's ten million dollars. That's what you see. For ten million dollars, you get a facelift. That's all you get. And so that helps us also as a board to realize, you know, it seems to, to each individual, I mean, to you individually or me individually, any of us individually, twenty million dollars is a ton of money. But when you're putting it into school projects, for ten million dollars, you get a facelift. That is all you get. And we're so grateful. We're so appreciative. I think we did a great job, but the work is unfinished. We have more work to do. And the only way we do that is with the voter support and us being able to raise the funds to, to continue to do that in our district. Um, I just, real quickly, and this, this did a great job. I appreciate that. And that, you know, again, you mentioned it's, it's the ten mil. This is all the ten mil. And, and you know, we see the red picks up a whole lot more under that scenario, right? And, and it's all just, we're kind of basing it on historical stuff, but we're also just hoping, you know, that the state will continue to do such a thing. Um, the other thing is, under the proposed, if we went to the nine point five, we could see six million dollars come in annually. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So over ten million, ever, over ten years, we're looking at about sixty million dollars. And so let's assume that we went that direction, that the voters stood with us and understood our needs and our facilities and, and, and really the goal of our, of a school district is to see what the opportunity is and to cash in on that opportunity, right? And so the biggest opportunity looks like getting to the ten mil, which it's still, we're still at the nine point five, so we'd have to have other conversations. But let's assume that this, that the, that our community supported our, the, the needs of our district to the tune of six million annually, over ten years, that's sixty million dollars. Let's assume that we invest that six million dollars every year because we can't build a school for six million. We can't build a school for twelve. We can't build a school for eighteen, so on and so forth. So let's say we get to sixty million, we've invested it. How much could we possibly make on six million invested annually over ten years? You can be super rough. I'm not going, she's not going to quote you on this, but let's just.
So that's a long timeframe. Um, you know, right now we, and I'm sorry for these technical answers, we're in this. So that's a long timeframe. You know, right now, we, and I'm sorry for these technical answers, we're in this inverted yield curve where short-term interest rates are higher than long-term interest rates. So in, in this world right now, you're getting 5, 5.5% on, on, you know, interest earnings. I don't believe that's going to, you know, last longer than another year, in my view. And then it turns into something that looks more like 1 or 2% every year that you would accumulate.
Yeah. And we could do this presentation again next month, right? And, and you could run those numbers and say, you know, in 10 years, if you guys use none of that 6 million every single year and just invest it, or, I mean, run us the situation of 3 million also to show us how little it is. Like, it's not going to make a dent. But I am going to bet that in all of those scenarios, a new school build is not doable. As long as we stay below the 10-mill. In all of those scenarios, I mean, maybe, maybe there's a slight chance that 6 million over 10 invested, we might have enough. But then what are we doing all these 10 years? There's, we're doing nothing in any other school throughout the whole entire district. And so really, our only chance to build a new school in Silver Consolidated Schools is to get to the 10-mill. And I'm going to sit right here and say, as a school board member, it's time to do that. Four, six years ago when we did it last time, we should have, we should have encouraged our community, we should have seen it and the need and known, and we should have inched it then, and we didn't, and that's on us. But when this comes out to a vote and it goes into, to a, an election, it is not the superintendent that is asking to raise your new taxes, it is the school board. That is the school board's job. And if that is what we see is important, it's on school board members and not the superintendent. Thank you for your presentation. Do you guys have any other questions? I look forward to seeing you next month. Will you bring that presentation?
Absolutely.
Appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins, anything to add?
No, I'll only just add one. I appreciate Mark and the board and where you are and the conversations you're having. It's not easy and I thank you for being willing to look at this and, and have a vision to see the big picture. I'll also say candidly, and I know the paper can look at this, if you go look at the camp, state rate ranks, rankings of our schools and where our schools rank, and we have several schools that are in the top 125, including Jose Barrios and Sixth Street. But below that, your number one school, that if there was a campus that needs to be at the priority, ranked at number 11. Of all the 300-plus, number 11 is Cliff Schools. And so when you look at the first priority that the state will look at and look at for funding, depending on the conversations, the facilities master plan, whether it's remodel, whether it's replace. If I get asked once, I get asked a thousand times, when are we going to be able to do it? This is the way that we're able to do it. And, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are having this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Do you have anything else for us?
No, ma'am.
All right. Next on our agenda is Mr. Luis Alvarez, Associate Superintendent with our Personnel Report. Welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you so much.
Cyberland as well as present. I'm going to be very frank, even though my name's Louis. This is going to be the last one that we're going to have of really good numbers because we're starting to get resignations as people are looking to retire. Move on. So we're currently at 98% filled. I do have, I do have some of these positions that already got filled today as I made some phone calls. I have two positions that were filled. I have another one that we have interviews set up for April 4th. So we're moving on, on the vacancies that we do have, but we are getting a lot of vacancies that are coming in as people are looking to go ahead and retire. And all of that is part of the discussion that we've been having with our principals, asking that maybe now's the time that we got to go ahead and strike. I'll be going to a job fair in detail at the start of next month, hoping to go ahead and garner some, some people from over there. And so I said, if people are thinking about retiring, please let's make those moves so that we can fill those positions. And our, our community of teachers have been really, really great, as well as other workers to go ahead and start, but they're coming in, so I do apologize. I never hit the 100%. I shot for it.
Got really, really close. Any, any questions for Mr. Alvarez? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Associate Superintendent Cindy Barris with our Enrollment Party. Welcome.
Thank you. Evening, Madam President, members of the board, guests, colleagues, friends out there at home. I have something exciting to say. Our numbers didn't change.
Oh.
I'm so excited. I don't know that that's happened to me. And so I had to like triple check. The only thing that did change, and I, I will show you, is we did add two more people virtually. Those numbers still count for us. But we added a ninth grader and we added a 12th grader. Sometimes that happens during the year if there was medical emergencies, different, different things like that. And so that was the only thing that changed. I'm really excited about that. So we're still holding steady up at 21, 24. And so you, you still see the comparison. There, there is some slight, but I also want to, you know, the middle schools up here talking about testing and the things that they're doing and the incentives that they're doing. I think a lot of the stability at this time has a lot to do with that. You have all of our principals really looking at it. You have the hype coming out with the house system. All of those things lead to, you know, kind of what the students said. And you couldn't have asked for a better on-the-spot answer about that camaraderie and that sense of belonging. You know, I know I came to Silver a year late because my son wanted to stay where he was at school. So we split up our whole family, you know, like, that was the worst year of my life. I lived without my husband for a whole year. And I stayed with my son because of that, because of that sense of camaraderie. And as we start building it and our, our principals are doing a phenomenal job with it, I think we're going to see that really impact. And so that's all I have for you. You guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Cindy? Dr. Diaz, go ahead. Oh, you're okay? She raised her hand, did she not?
She was just saying hello.
All right. Next item is Mrs. Joyce Badele, our Mental Health Grant Coordinator. Welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Hawkins, the members of the audience. And we did have International Social Emotional Learning Day, March 8th. And so throughout the week, we had a lot of activities that were taking place at all of the campuses, really focusing on and promoting kindness, acts of kindness on behalf, by the students. We did present classroom lessons on kindness and ways for students to spread kindness. We had kindness scavenger hunts. At the high school, we had a mini job fair where we promoted careers in mental health fields. And we did give staff members a little token of appreciation. So I want to give the board the same token of appreciation that we provided to our staff.
Ms. McMillan, thank you so much.
And then the other thing on the report is, we're also looking at promoting mental health in a different way this upcoming school year. Done a lot of research on the benefits of music and how music helps to reduce stress, reduce depression in students and also anxiety. And so we do have openings for instructional assistance in the area of music. We've given one person an offer for one of the positions, but based on the number of classes that we have, we were originally going to look at two positions, but it looks like we're going to need three positions because of the number of classes that we need to cover. And so we do have that ad still out there. We are still recruiting in that area. So and we did also have a meeting with Las Cruces Public Schools. And so we're trying to get ideas from them so that we can have a successful music program going forward.
Awesome. It's exciting. Any questions for Mr., Mrs. Badele? Sorry about that.
The music programs that you're going to start next year, are they going to be at all of the schools or will they be at certain schools?
All the, all, all the elementary schools. Including, we're, we're also looking to include Silver Scholars in that as well.
Awesome.
So the people hired will be traveling and do more than one school so that we can get them all covered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item E, Director of Finance, Mrs. Michelle McCain. Do you have anything for us or any?
I actually have a couple of things that we didn't cover in finance, the finance meeting, because I didn't have the information, but
Sure.
over the weekend I got my budget due date.
Okay.
And so that is May 14.
Okay.
So she'll allow me to go into her department now. So that's good.
And the other thing that I just wanted to mention, you know, with all the conversations about construction and budgets and things like that, is there is a statute in New Mexico that we cannot use our operational dollars for construction. We cannot buy or build a building outside of, of an emergency situation. And so, you know, when the conversation is had and people are looking at, especially with the budget season, when I'm giving numbers and talking about all the money that the schools will have or does have, that money is not accessible for construction. And so I just thought that was something that's everybody needed to know.
Yeah. And what is that? Would the state grants us, you manage a budget of about how much?
Last year it was 31 million.
Thank you.
And so this year, they, they said, they promised in the increased insurance and, and the 3% average, average 3% raises that, you know, we will get, those will be covered. So I imagine that that budget number is going to go up.
Yeah. And how much of that is spent on salaries and benefits of 31 million?
80% right now.
Thank you for that.
And then just keep the likes on and all the other things.
Yeah, exactly.
Can't pay for.
No, yeah. She almost got us in trouble, didn't she? Thank you, Michelle, for that.
Thank you.
Board of Education, next up, Finance Subcommittee. We met last Thursday and reviewed financial reports, asked questions about the ones that we had questions for. We reviewed the large expenditures on the HVAC system. Specifically, Stoudt, that's a big project that we've got going on that we're trying to use our art dollars for. And she explained that there's also small projects at many different schools that just have needs. And so that's being done as well. The track continues to move forward and us, our ability to pay for that. And we're so thankful to the city for partnering with us on that endeavor. And also, what was the other one? And then we, we talked about the bus. The buses, the bus is here and we're excited about that. And we are anxious about number two getting here and it will get here when it's supposed to get here. So Kim, do you have anything to add?
No, I do have a question. Do we know on, Stoudt on the HVAC, how far along in the process we are?
The right person's probably not here for that answer.
Right. So, so as far as I know, they, they're currently doing all of the ducting work. They're getting close to working on the fire alarm system. We have to do the fire alarm system prior to, of course. And, and those are those small pieces that no one really realizes that anytime you make any kind of a change to a building, you have to go ahead and address and, and come into current code for fire code. So they're working on that as well.
Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Clement, I also know that they, right now, they should have completed a phase of it where, so they've got a group of, a hallway where teachers initially moved into different spaces while they tore up and did all that. And so right now, I believe they've completed that part of it. And so those teachers are going to be able to go back into their rooms once they've been cleaned, right? Because you've got a little dust. And then they will begin, and they will begin the next phase. And so some teachers will move into other spaces. And then they will do the same thing as far as pulling out, replacing, duck work, the whole nine. But one phase of it has been completed. I believe the approximate date of completion, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, is the end of May? Is that sound about right?
May 15.
May 15. And so right now, as I understand it, they are on track. If you'll pardon the pun, they are, they are on track to get completed.
And just to update the public, not that a ton of people phone in and we don't have a ton of people in the audience, but the track is moving forward as well. We're waiting for, what I understand, to be consistent 50-degree temperature around the clock for two weeks. And then we can resurface it. So we appreciate everybody working with us on that. Also on the Finance Subcommittee, I reached out to Joe Guillen, which is the Executive Director of the New Mexico School Boards Association, to find out if it was allowable to have a substitute member of the Finance Committee meeting. And he thought it was. Obviously, we know we can't have three board members there because we would be in violation of the OMA. But Mr. Khan, I would like to formally invite you to be our substitute. So in my absence or Kim's absence, that you could be a part of the Finance Subcommittee. So we will, we'll work in that. And we all need substitutes sometimes, right? Life's crazy. All right. So we will do that. Audit Subcommittee, we don't meet. We don't have to meet. We're not required to meet as long as the audit is not going on. So we met during the audit process and then we quit meeting once it was completed. And now we just received our audit report. And so that won't be, that won't be happening again until they come back and we do an initial. Even we can meet if there's like a planning meeting, but other than that, it's not, it's not required. Threat Assessment Committee report. Mr. McMillan isn't with us, but Mr. Alvarez, do you have anything?
No, ma'am. We didn't have any reason to meet, which is actually a good thing.
Yeah.
And our, our security and that are continuing to do their testing. And so we're looking forward to them completing and getting on, on the job here quite soon.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. All right. That brings us to Board President. And I actually made notes. First of all, I just want to thank everyone for allowing us to reschedule this meeting. There was a conflict initially, which resolved itself, but I wasn't going to say, let's reschedule and let's reschedule again. So thank you, everyone, for being so willing to accommodate my initial schedule, as well as Mr. Hawkins. We really, really appreciate that. The art around the room is amazing. I think they should put their names and amounts underneath. And they might be able to sell some of this because it is phenomenal. This is all artwork from the high school art classes, I understand.
Mr. Golick.
Mr. Golick and his students. So phenomenal, phenomenal artists in our district that it would, some of this would look really beautiful in my house, just saying.
I've got dibs.
Oh, man. I want to just put an extra plug in for the Town of Silver City, for Howie, for our legislators, the Rec Center. We got to go and attend the groundbreaking of that. And that has been a project that has been talked about for a really long time with great anticipation by so many members of the community. And it's, it's going to be an amazing endeavor. And I just want to thank whoever on that committee had the foresight to think about incorporating it physically close to Silver Schools because that's going to bring a really great asset to Silver Schools that we don't have to foot the bill for. No. No, it's going to be, it's going to be really quite something. I remember growing up, I used to, they used to do rollerblading at the Recreation Center here for the longest time. A lot of people don't even know where the Rec Center is, right? And so then in fourth grade, when everyone's like, let's go rollerblading at the Rec Center. And you're like, where's the Rec Center? So it's going to be really, really amazing for our community. And I think there was so many of us there, right? There was board members and community members and students and teachers and administrators. And it was really the culmination of a huge effort by so many players in our community that just shows where Silver City and Grant County is currently. We're very integrated. We're very connected. We're very a team. And we're moving forward on, on major projects that I think it would, it's exciting for me as a homegrown. I mean, I think Silver City is just the most awesome place ever. And I feel so blessed to have been able to stay here and raise my family here and have a career here. But also for people who don't live here, aren't homegrown, it's, it's really going to add another level. I mean, I can only speak for people who are not from here. It's got to be exciting to live here or even just to come visit. So really excited about that. Also want to thank Heather Holguin, our principal at Sixth Street. She sent out an invitation to us board members to come and read to kindergarteners. And so I, in my crazy tack season, made the time because I was just, I just love being around the kids to go and get to read. And that was just such a treat. And so she's not the only administrator that has given us open invitation to their schools. You guys all do, and we thank you for that so much because it really is what, what this is all about, getting to get out there and see the kids. It really kind of, for me, and I know for other board members, it just breathes that breath of fresh air that really brings us back to why we're doing it just breathes that breath of fresh air that really brings us back to why we're doing what we're doing. I always forget to do this, but since I actually have notes tonight, Lisa, thank you for everything you always do for the board. And I know specifically tonight for the food, but you're always doing so much for us. And keeping us all on track and all going in the right direction. And I know sometimes we make your hard, your job hard, or we put you in the middle of things. And so, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Spring break is coming up, and I know the kids could not be ready, more ready for it, but I know teachers and administrators are so ready for it. It's a little late this year, and we're getting the flack for that. And I'm like, listen, I don't make the calendar. Somebody else did it. It's not on me. There's a lot of like, they're so confused. Is the nine weeks over? Are we still in the nine weeks? Are we on the next nine weeks? It's, so anyway, spring break is almost here, and I don't know why it's a week late. Anyway, we sprung forward and we survived, right? The kids got to school and everybody, everybody survived. I talked about, I will most likely be emailing Joe Guillen about if there's any other boards in the state of New Mexico that are gonna take a collective action from boards, much like the superintendents have done. I intended to talk to him about that today, when I talked to him, and I just forgot until you mentioned that. And so, just to kind of put that out here for you guys to kind of ponder, because obviously, we are a collective board, and if we're going to join any type of action of other boards, we would do it collectively. Something to think about, something to ponder. And that will do it. The rest can wait for executive. Dr. Diaz.
That was good, dear. Well, first of all, I would just like to say I made it to my first SHAC meeting. Thank you very much. So I'm filling my way through. I appreciate the invitation. I'm not really sure why I wasn't invited to the Finance Committee, until I get all that stuff straight all the time. It's obvious, I know.
You have your.
So I really actually appreciate.
You have your niche.
That's, thank God. All right. But I, I do really appreciate the help, and, and so I don't have all the terminology right, but it's a good thing we all have a little something. So I appreciate the assistance. I definitely had a blast at Sixth Street, so thank you. We had a blast with the kindergarteners, and I have talked with Ms. Evans about going for some of the STEM stuff. So we really appreciate the invitations, and eventually we're gonna make it to all of them. But again, it does keep it all fresh in our mind as far as what the mission is, right? It's the kiddos, so that is really appreciated. And thanks to the kiddos for putting up with us, because, yeah, we're not teachers.
We're a little wrong.
And then the artwork is amazing. I don't wanna, you know, keep echoing that, but I also just, it's, it's amazing. I mean, these are professionals, right? I mean, they're, they're picking up a trade, and it's, it's actually a talent. It's more than a trade, and that's amazing. Not everyone has that creative eye or hand, and, and we really appreciate it. We really enjoy it. So thank you to the art class at the high school. I just wanted to clarify the calendar changes, and just to be clear, don't shoot the messenger. So, you know, Mr. Hawkins had to present the calendar, calendar revisions. We knew those were in the works, and so really what you're seeing as far as modifications is a mandatory revision by PED with the verdict that they came down with as far as days and things like that. So we really had to work within the confines of, we had to find more days without adding more contract days, because that also adds more, takes more money from the budget and takes that money from kids. So we were really trying to really collaborate, and, and people hit the ground running. We had twenty people with their brain, just the bubbles, and it's crazy. So, thank you, everybody, for scrambling to get that done once PED came down with the, the actual mandates. Really appreciate that. And then, I, you know, I know we, we have to have hard conversations sometimes, and they're not popular ones, and they're not fun ones. And I want everyone to know, when we're talking about where to go with bonds and, you know, things like that, it's, we know families are struggling, and we know things are more expensive than they've ever been. But we also understand that that same thing holds true for the expenses as a school district, and we want our kids to have quality education, because that's what moves us in to comfortable livings and our abilities to provide trades and allow our kids to go out and be self-sufficient on their own. And, 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 you know, learning's the first part to that. And we all know, I mean, we've been talking about a lot of different things, like, you know, Cliff School Bill. I mean, how long have we been talking about that? Right? Right? Might probably longer, right? You're nice, but probably longer than that.
It's mutual bond.
Yeah. And so, we don't, we wanna just be sure that we, we are, you know, we have a, a facilities plan management. We're gonna prioritize within our infrastructure here, and that's very important to us, so that we get things right. We're gonna request the same of the state now that they're changing guidelines, that they really look at how they prioritize school districts and, and particular schools, when they're looking at who's the next appropriate candidate, right? So those are things that we're really, we take that seriously, but we also realize, you know, at some point, we have to be able to walk in, and I'm joking about the lights, that we can't pay for the utilities. But we have to have a place to turn the light on, right? And there's only so many facelifts and bubble gum that you can utilize to maintain facilities. And while our maintenance crew and facilities, you know, our, our crew does an amazing job. I mean, they, they can put anything, but, but at the end of the day, there's only so much bubble gum left. And, you know, we don't take that lightly, but I think at some point, we have to look at some shifts as far as how we utilize the state funding and how we play the game, right? I mean, because we all drive around to all these places and say, why not us? Why not us? Why aren't we good enough? Our kids are good enough. We, what we do is good enough. Why not us? And I think now that we have the answer, we have the ability to make change, right? And we have to decide how much change, and we leave that in the hands of our constituents. But I will tell you, the number one question that is posed to us all the time is, why do our facilities look like they do, and why have we not had anything new built? Look at Cobre, look at Lordsburg, look at Hatches. Wait, I mean, the list goes on and on. And so, you know, why don't we have a rec here, rec center here? Why don't we have this there? And those things are not made possible. We're, right now, we're, we're not just getting by, right? We won't just get by if we stay where we're at standing, right? And so, we have to decide, do we want to just get by, or do we want to grow? And growing our facilities means growing opportunities for our kids. So I think, you know, we have to understand, I clearly don't have a financial background after you heard me tonight, and this is longer winded than I want it to be, but I want people to understand the implications of what we vote on, right? And we can come to future meetings. We also want to bring forward what an average increase in, you know, what the average household increase for property tax would look like, and how many people are gonna have to pay that, right? We, we're aware of the impact to community, and we want to take this, we really want to contemplate this with all the information in front of us. But the, at the end of the day, we still have to move a district forward.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz.
Thank you.
Mr. Khan.
Wow. I just wanted to thank the students, Mr. Golick's class, for the fabulous art here in the boardroom today. I would wanna take some home too, so give me first dibs.
Arm wrestle.
Let's see what else. Adding to Madam Chair's comments about the rec center, what was inspiring to me was having the students do the groundbreaking, because that's gonna be their rec center, and that just really hit home to me. So whoever's idea, Howie's, Priscilla's, whoever's idea was that, kudos to, because that's gonna be their facility. Thank you, Michelle, and your team for producing a nice audit, for your hard work. Thank you. And, you know, I was gonna thank Lisa again too, for putting up with us. Thank you for everything that you do. It is truly welcome for, for what you do. Let's see what else. I did have the opportunity to go into Sixth Street, and thank you, Mrs. Holgyn, and to Silver Scholars. Thank you, Mrs. Mardine, for your hospitality. Walking into both these schools, I felt like I was back in Atlanta again at the Ron Clark Academy, because the energy as soon as you walked into the doors was phenomenal. Phenomenal. It, it just, you know, the, the fist bumps, the kids just hugging you. Ms. Holgyn came in a cat in a hat, which almost scared me, you know? The Gab, the, the twin teachers, Gabby and I forgot her, the other teacher's name, the, the twins, Gabby Sanchez's sister, played a trick on me, and so, you know, it was like, it wasn't even April Fools, but just that happening was just awesome. Reading to the kids, their questions. I actually got to, by memory, got to sing with the Silver Scholar kids of just a song that I just held in memory by singing every day in the fourth grade. So that was awesome. It, it is on Facebook. I don't, don't judge me by my singing, because I'm not a singer, but it was a lot of fun, and I really enjoyed it. And I look forward to other visits from other schools, and just to see what, what other schools have to offer. So, everybody enjoy your spring break, like President Montenegro said. You know, it's probably much needed, teachers, students, staffs. I don't get a spring break, but I'll enjoy it for me. Going into with the Geo Bond, I, I get, this is a little hard for me to speak, but I hear it at all aspects on my line of duty. You know, I get retirees that come up to me and say, well, what isn't it, what is it for us that we don't have to pay into Silver Schools? But my answer is, it's like the circle of life. One time, you probably had students that attended schools, and you probably, you know, at that time, you know, thanked for whoever carried you that was retired for, that, that made an investment for your student enjoyable. To me, it's just a circle of life with everything. And like what Dr. Diaz and President Montenegro said, you know, it's just an investment from our community and investing for our students. So they, so it could be enjoyable for the years to come. I, I totally get it. I, I see all aspects at the county, here, out in the community. My thing, you know, come to the school board meeting, and you have a voice. Use it. We wanna hear you. And with that, you know, we have our master facility, master plan. We're going on our third meeting. Sorry, did not, could not attend the second one, but, you know, that's, we have a group of community members, and I believe it's a well-represented group of community members at this meeting. So I, I feel like we're really covered. I know coming in the future, you know, the, the Silver Schools is gonna do a good job on being transparent to the community, on what figures and everything will look like. And Mr. Hawkins has already led the way to that, so thank you, sir. Other than that, I, I close my comments, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Khan, and thank you for your invaluable perspective on property taxes, because you are the boots on the ground, and you understand that. So thank you for that addition. I may ask you to present for the board at some point.
Okay. Wonderful. I would love to do that.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Clement?
Okay. I really have a lot to just mirror what the other board members have stated, and Madam Chair, but I do wanna add a few things. Thank you, Mr. Golick, and the art, his art classes and the art club for the beautiful art. And I just want to even just bring the attention on and add to that, the created, creativity, the self-expression, and how much it fosters into overall academics. And even at this level, this is an amazing level, but even from elementary all the way up, art really does foster so much in social and cognitive development that it is so important. And so, this is just a testament to that. It's just beautiful. And so, thank you to his hard work, and all the art teachers that work so hard with the kids. I also would like to recognize the Silver City Public Library for partnering, partnering with the Silver High Band for a community showcase this last weekend. It was really cold out, and we did have a great, they had a great turnout. And also, transitioning into that over for spring break, Silver City Public Library does have a lot of free events and activities. They have a family movie night. They've got some chalk the block activities. They've got some STEM activities with some squishy conduit dough that I don't understand, but they do have a lot. And so, that's something, a lot of free events that I know kind of are out there on, that you can find very easily on the internet. So that's something I think that everybody should, you know, take advantage of with their kids. Also, thank you to Mrs. Holgyn and Sixth Street. I did actually go and read as well, and I took my sophomore daughter with me, and so she went along and read as well too. She was super excited about it, and she, I think, got more hugs than I did. So that was, and, and she really appreciated it so well. And I think what made it really cool is, I am actually a Sixth Street student, and so I went to Sixth Street a very, very long time ago. And so, when I went in and was visiting with the office staff, and they said, you know, have you been to our school before? And I was like, actually, this is my third grade classroom. I have kindergarten here. So, at the time, it was K through three. So that was kind of a neat, just revisit to it, and then also to be able to show my youngest daughter that this is where I went to elementary school. So that was kinda cool. And then also, as far as our, the middle levy and our facilities plan, one thing I would like to add on that is, I know our current level right now, we are at a point where we are covering our just general maintenance costs and trying to keep up with the schools that we have. But something that I think about, because, I mean, we, nobody, we don't like, I don't wanna see new taxes. I don't like it. You know, we, we wanna see it, but if anything, we need to also consider that at a point, we're gonna get, we're gonna get to a point with our deteriorating schools that our current levels will not, are gonna get to, they won't maintain these maintenance costs any longer. We are not going to, we're gonna get to a point, we can't continue just putting Band-Aids on. And like you said, that gum only goes so far to keep it together. And so, with no changes, at a certain point, we are gonna have to do something, because we're not even gonna cover our maintenance costs at some point in the future. So that's just my point, so, to think about. But thank you, guys, and thank you, Michelle, for your hard work, and Lisa also.
Thank you, Mrs. Clement. All right. Open public comment. Lisa, do we have any? I did not receive any emails either. So we'll move on to our action items, the consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to Ms. McCain.
Hi. Oh, question, um, this evening, I have checks written, I have budget adjustments. I don't have a work ethic and proposals, some donations, and we will get to it. Our checks written in the month of February, for which I seek your approval, are three million eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-four cents in checks. And then I shared with you all our budget adjustment list, and since audit has been out, the list is considerably long. We had initial, my first bar is for our art McKinney dental funds. When I was estimating the cost of the installation, I didn't think about electrical, and apparently have to plug it in for it to work. So I had to move the budget around. It's in the same fund, but just move it into the appropriate lines for expenditure. And so, I did that, or am going to do that once I have your approval. And then we received from the PED, usually we have our letter about growth and, and the adjustments for that. Well, this year, we got a letter, and it was very brief, and it said that we had an adjustment of reducing our operational budget by six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and one cent, and that is to reflect the out-of-school-time calendar units adjustments that we had, that initially factored into our budget with our last year's calendar. And it was, I believe, Cliff's calendar that gave us those additional units for us to have funding for. They, they reduced it less than a unit, I believe, and so it was six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and one cent that I have to reduce the operational budget. We also received another allocation of the Healthy Universal School Meals. That is the state-funded additional compensation for our food service department. We received an additional hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars that I would like to get into budget as it needs to be spent by the end of the year. The subsequent bars that I have are all based on our audited, the audited cash balance that was not in our initial budget. We, I have to estimate how much cash I think we're gonna have left, and then I'm able to build part of that into our initial budget going into the new year. I'm doing this in February and March, and so I don't hit it on, on target ever. But I have in our operational budget an additional eight hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and one cent that will go back into our operational budget. We have our local revenue operational, which the PED has taken out the property tax dollars that helped fund the operational budget and put it in a separate fund. And so that's what that fund is. It's new as of last year, and it's basically a subset of our operational budget. And it's basically a subset of our operational budget and used in the same manner. We'll have $44,396.40 coming into that budget. That is additional cash carryover. Our food services, we have, after our audit in the initial budget, we have $130,912.62 going into our food service fund. We have our athletics. I may have been a little bit ambitious. And so now I'm going to have to reduce that budget by $16,212.92. We have our $23,000, which is non-instructional support, which in our world, we call our trust accounts. And the additional cash going into those funds are $75,478.42. We have our HB 33 capital improvement, carryover cash of $86,275. We have our capital improvements SB 9 Local, a cash carryover of $65,984.03. And then our debt services, which is solely used to pay back the bonds that we have previously sold. And the additional cash on that is $154,730.62. And then finally, I have two donations for which I seek your, our appreciation and your approval for is Dec Family Dental gave SHS Track $1,000. And then Grant County Golf Association gave our golf team $500. And so for all of these things, I ask your approval tonight.
Thank you, Michelle. No awards, forbids and proposals, no conflict of interest and no disposal action items?
No, because we canceled our RFP for a new auditor because we have our auditor for one more year.
Yay. A motion for approval for the consent agenda as presented.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Condon.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Clement. I will ask for just a clarification, Michelle, because this, to this, for people listening, this sounds like a lot of money. So can you just provide clarification that this is not new money? Rather, it is stuff that has to be just cleaned up based on projections when you originally did the budget?
Right.
And now we have the actual numbers. And so it's just providing budget authority for you over the actual amounts rather than the projected.
Right.
Would that be accurate? I just told everybody, okay. Like, can you please say this?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Let me rephrase that. Do I understand this correctly? That this is, okay. Because it just sounds like a lot of money, so that's what it is. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item number B is transportation. Do we have anything under transportation? Nothing. The next item that would originally be on our agenda would be other action items. So I'm seeing that we have no action items and I just have a question. Did the calendar need to have action taken on it?
I do believe that since the board did approve it, it will need to be
Reapproved.
Reapproved with the amendments to it.
Okay. So everything was kind of crazy this month. Like, our agenda was pushed up days and we were all kind of just flailing. So we'll get that on next month as an action item to take action on the calendar. And then maybe by that time, Cliff might have theirs ready. Michelle, do you need something?
I just wanted to address the fact that we don't have PED's new calendar for the year to test our document yet. We, they send out a worksheet that we use to test it, so by then we should have it.
Probably have it by then. Okay.
I got a special favor, Madam President, members of the board from PED. So they send us a sample test tool, which was, was very handy in making some adjustments.
It caught the air. Okay, but we still need to wait on that to approve this.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. That's why we didn't have it as an action item. That's what I meant to say. Next item on our agenda is open public comment again. Nothing has come in. Future meetings and proposed agenda items. So our next finance committee is April 11. Regularly scheduled work session and regularly, and regular boarding is April 15 in Cliff. We didn't talk about rescheduling that. Is his schedule good for it?
Madam President, members of the board, we have an RFP out that we're wanting, we're, we're taking steps to address some school extracurricular uniforms. And we have to cover both junior high and high school across our three campuses, Silver, La Plata and Cliff. And so the RFP is expected to come in at the end of March. We will evaluate the proposals. That's a very long-winded way of saying, is it possible to do a special meeting on April 3rd or the 4th? So that we can continue to progress towards that.
April 3rd or the 4th?
And it would not need to be a very lengthy meeting at all?
My calendar is open, fellow board members?
I'm not here.
Not here?
I'm not here the 3rd, 4th or 5th.
Okay.
But I could call in if I can.
And if we have a, if we have a... Also, if we have a quorum, you would be needing. Patrick? Michelle?
I can make it work.
Okay. Yeah, you guys will let us know when you need to schedule it? As soon as you kind of know what day, then we'll reach out and nail down a day and day and time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And our coaches will appreciate it.
Perfect. Okay, so 11th, 15th, I'll get all my extensions filed before the meeting. I might, I might have my computer with me on the way out there, but we'll get it done. The Region 8 meeting is next week on Tuesday in Cobry, if anyone can attend. School Law Conference is Albuquerque, May 30th through the 1st. NMCEL, July 15th through the 19th. And the Law Conference, oh, it's there. Oh, the Law Conference is early. Is that normally? It's usually June, isn't it?
It was about that time.
Is it right there? Okay. And then probably they'll get us dates on the leadership retreats. Keep in mind, did we get any updates on the legislation for increasing school board members required hours?
No, if not, but I have been in contact, Madam President, excuse me, members of the board. I do believe that Senator Hemphill was planning on coming in and kind of giving us an update of some of the bills. And so I'll make sure to include that in there.
Okay. Just will want to keep that on our radar.
Right. And that would be for next year as well. So anything that was done, it would be for the next year.
Following year, yeah. So we're, we're supposed to all get five, five as of right now. There was also proposed legislation to increase region meetings to three training hours. So we're waiting on that too. Patrick will keep us in the loop because he gets that stuff directly from the region. Yes, Dr. Diaz's question.
Well, it would be awesome if they're going to increase requirements, if they would, I appreciate the opportunities we already have, but some accessibility to training that's not necessarily on-site.
Online.
Things that we could do when we're up in the middle of the night at our own pace.
I'm not up in the middle of the night, but yes. We'll relay the message.
We can definitely pass it on.
Okay, spring break's coming up. Does Cliff do the same as us? Awesome. So everyone, enjoy your spring break next week. Good Friday. I don't know how that plays in. But we also have the Monday after in town. Lots of events going on. Silver Scholars, middle school, high school, all of our spring sports. And so if you have a chance to get out and enjoy them, let's enjoy that for sure. Cliff as well. Looks like they're having their Promet Almost Lodge. Is that, is this the first year to do that?
No, ma'am.
You've done it before?
Yes, ma'am.
How fun. That's awesome. All right, the board may elect to go into executive session for reasons permitted under the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, see NMSA 1978 subsection 10-15-1, H 1 through 9. Tonight, we will be going into closed session. It should be something very quick. So motion to go into executive, please.
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz, who I'm second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Con. Please do a roll call, Mr. Con.
This is Montenegro.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Mrs. Clement.
Yes.
We are going to go into executive. It's 7:50. And then we will come, we'll come out quickly. And then we will come, we'll come out quickly. Come out of close, please. By Dr. Diaz, who have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Clement. Patrick Lloyd, your roll call.
President Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Mr. McMillan, and Mrs. Clement.
Yes.
We are out of executive. It is eight-ten. The board only discussed those things listed on the agenda and no formal action was taken. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan, who have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Clement. Patrick, will you do a roll call?
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mr. McMillan, and Mrs. Clement.